Good evening, everyone. I'm Shannon Rutherford, the Town Planner for Farmington. This is the Plan and Zoning Commission. We will start with a roll call of the members. Matthew Bandle.
Here.
Robert Canto.
Here.
Scott Halsted.
Here.
David St. Germain.
Here.
Liz Sanford is absent for the record. Our alternates Bruce Polsky.
Here.
Mike Tucci.
Here.
Peter Zarella.
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, it's all yours.
Thank you, Shannon. Welcome, everybody, to the June 9 Town Plan and Zoning Commission Meeting. A couple of quick pieces of business before we get started. Public hearing item number two on the agenda has been withdrawn. The application's been withdrawn, so there will not be hearing for that tonight for anybody that's in the room or online that came in for that. We also have a vacancy with Commissioner Sanford being absent, so Peter, would you please sit in for Liz for this hearing?
Yes.
For this meeting, excuse me. Thank you. All right. Jumping right in, a couple of applications to accept. So if we could get a motion in a second for number one for Farmington Land Trust, please.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the application by Farmington Land Trust, LLC, for special permit and site plan review for the removal of filled construction materials associated with eroding fishing platform and the construction of a new accessible public observation platform and boardwalk at, sorry, didn't get glasses, 873 River Road FPO Zone, and schedule a public hearing date with recommended hearing date of July 7, 2025.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions. Motion passes. All right, Carrier Development, I mean, item number two.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to accept the application by Carrier Development, LLC, for special permit and site plan review for expanded home in excess of 2,400 square living area and 3,200 total area, and drilling and blasting and rock crushing for a new single-family dwelling at 112 Red Oak Hill R30 Zone, and schedule a public hearing date with the recommended hearing date of July 7, 2025.
All those in favor? Second. Oops, sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions. Motion passes. Thanks, everybody. All right, to the public hearings, just a little bit on process before we jump into the first one. We will have the applicant present, then the commission will go through questions. We'll open it to the public first in the room, then online. We do ask for public comment. We appreciate public comment very much. We do try to set a guideline of roughly five minutes per person, just to keep the conversation moving and respect everybody's time. So we'll walk through that with our one public hearing tonight for Richard Jones' application for change of zone from CR to C1.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Robert Reeve. I'm a lawyer with Scully Nixon Reeve at 79 Main Street in Unionville. I represent the applicant, Jones Construction LLC. Richard Jones is here tonight. He's the principal. Also, Dave Whitney is the professional engineer. I want to give you a brief overview of the site and what we're requesting from you, and then I'll turn it over to Dave, really, to the details of the presentation. And Rick's available for any questions that you may have about how the site's going to function. Two preliminary matters. The sign's been posted. It's been out there quite a while now, since we've continued the hearing several times. And the certified mail receipts were received and given to Lance for the record as well. So this proposal is for what we're calling contractor spaces for small trade owner-operator type of businesses where they can have a space for themselves, maybe a couple of employees to operate their businesses. Perhaps they've grown out of a home operation. So folks like plumbers, electricians, heating, ventilation, air conditioning, carpenters, et cetera. We gave a list of representative types of occupations we submitted for the record earlier, and it's going to be very similar to what was approved a while back and is now being built out on Route 6. There'll be a work area. There'll be opportunity for inside storage, no outside storage. And then, if they wish, it can be fitted out with some office space as well. So a place for somebody with a small business that needs a place to operate out of. It's a four-acre site. It's on the West Side of New Britain Avenue. Just to orient you, it's right between the Town Highway Garage and the M&amp;J Bus Terminal. So if you leave Unionville Center, you head down to Britain Avenue. It's on your right-hand side, a mile and a half, two miles down from Unionville Center. Across the street, other commercial uses, the thresholds, shipping and receiving building. It used to be data management. And then the Avon Wholesale Supply, Sanford and Harley lumberyard are across the street. Behind the site, to the rear, is the old railroad right away, which several years ago was relabeled the Farmington Canal Heritage Trail, otherwise known as the Rail Trail. And behind that, further to the west, you have the Walnut Farms subdivision. So this site is in one of the two industrial zones that we have in town. It's in the CR Zone, and that's represented by the pink on the map. And the other industrial zone in town is the C1 Zone. And the properties on this map that are in the C1 Zone are shown in blue. There's only two differences between those two zones in terms of regulatory requirements. One of the differences is building height, and that's not relevant here. The other is what the setback you have to observe is from a residentially zoned neighbor. And I'm emphasizing residentially zoned neighbor as opposed to a residential use on that property. And the significance of that, I hope I can make clear. We're requesting a zone change from CR to C1. We want to turn that pink into blue. And the reason for that is with the rail trail being zoned as residential, we, under the current zoning, we're required to keep our building 100 feet off the rail trail. And as you'll see in a moment, we're proposing what we think are three nicely moderately sized buildings with good landscape and good traffic circulation. But in order to do that, we've got to come to within 50 feet of the boundary, not the 100 that we're presently allowed to do. The alternative, we think, would be less attractive for everyone, be one larger building, closer to New Britain Avenue, if we were going to observe the 100-foot setback that's currently in place. Other features of the site, the rear of the site, there's a very steep embankment that leads up to the top of the slope. The standards to granted zone change are found in Article 4, Section 2 of your regulation. And there's a long list of things to consider, but the underlying concept is that it should be compatible with what's surrounding it. Does it fit into the neighborhood? We think this does. We've got, as I said, the highway garage, the bus terminal, the lumberyard. Another important factor that Shannon points out in her memo is that if you go further down towards Eastfield Center, north, off this picture on this map here, majority of the properties are also blue. They're also zone C1. So we're trying to bring our zoning into conformance with the other properties on this side of New Britain Avenue. We think that this use fits in very nicely with the neighborhood there. There are a couple other quick matters I want to talk about. We are requesting two waivers. One is from site coverage. We want to increase it a little bit over what's typically allowed. And the other is to decrease the landscaping. And I want to point those out at the beginning because ordinarily, for you to grant a waiver, we have to get a 5-6 vote. Right now, because of a resignation of a commissioner, we're operating with only five members on the commission. So if they get a 5-6 vote, we essentially have to have five out of five. So your decision would need to be unanimous in order to grant those waivers. We think there's good reasons for them. The first waiver we are requesting has to do with an amendment to the regulations that the commission passed a few years ago. It's designed to allow for some increased utilization of what's becoming scarce industrial land in Farmington. So if you apply best practices with drainage and you exceed what's required by the state stormwater design manual, you're allowed to increase your coverage over the 50%. That's what we've been working on here, to increase our coverage over that number. The other waiver that we're asking for has to do with the landscaping on the rear of the site. And Dave will go into this in detail, but we've got a very steep slope at the rear of the site. It's really not going to support vegetation very well. And to counter the lack or the reduction in vegetation, we're proposing a fence along there, along the border of the rail trail. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Dave and to Rick for questions, and I'll have a few comments after you're out. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dave Whitney. I'm a professional engineer with an office in Avon. For many years, we had a Planning and Zoning Commission Chairman in Avon who was famous for saying, "Your chances of approval are inversely proportional to the length of the presentation." So with that in mind, I will try to be as succinct as possible and try to cover all the salient points. Bob has accurately described, I think, everything to do with the zone change plan. So I'd like to start with the map of the existing conditions, and that's Plan 1, Shannon. Okay, first, for the record, I guess I should state that all the plans, these plans are based on a recent Class A, Class A 2, T2 survey by Nariani Land Surveying. So the boundary lines, the contours, and the other information shown is accurate. The site is 3.996 acres, four acres, on New Britain Avenue, with about 500 feet of frontage along New Britain Avenue. The eastern side of the site is shorter. It's about a, I'm sorry, western side, about 178 feet. The eastern side of the site is about 554 feet. So it's a bit of an odd-shaped parcel. The average depth's about 400 feet from the road to the rear of the site. Hyde Brook runs along the western property line. It's on the town of Farmington's land, but there are, the FEMA flood zone, the 100-year floodline, does encroach on the fortune of the site. I'll go into that a little bit more later. Eric Davison from Davison Environmental, LLC, soil scientist, was out to the site a while back, about a year ago, and determined that there are no adjacent wetland soils to the Hyde Brook. So the ordinary high-water mark is actually the limit of the regulated wetland area. And you have 150-foot upland review area from wetlands, and that is shown by this green line there. The site has been mined in the past for sand and gravel, so it's a bit bowl-shaped. The, most of the site in the front is relatively flat. It's about a 2% grade from the road up to the old railroad embankment in the rear of the property. The site is generally scrubbed growth with a few trees. And then, once you get to the back of the property, which is shaded in brown on this plan, I think I shaded it after I sent the plans to Shannon, but there, at the rear of the property, very steep, one-to-one slope, the old railroad embankment. There's about 36 to 38 feet of elevation difference from the toe of the slope up to the rail trail. And that will factor in a little bit later when I go over the site plan. The soil on the site that's left, it's classified as eudorphants, which means disturbed soil, but the parent material is a Manchester sand and gravel, very well-drained soil, which is fortunate for our stormwater management plan. We conducted soil tests on the site. There is a high-seasonal groundwater table down about approximately five feet, which factors into the stormwater design as well. Conducted percolation tests. The perk rate is about 3.2 minutes per inch, so it's well-drained soil. Now, I'd like to show the site layout plan. All right. We are proposing three buildings with units for contractors, 22 units total. There'll be 16 smaller units of about a little under 1,400 square feet each, and then six larger units, about 3,000 square feet each. Rather than design one large building in the center of the site, we thought it was more attractive and a better design to separate, make the buildings relatively smaller. Building A on the eastern portion of the site is 1,70670 square feet. Building B at the rear of the property is 11,250 square feet. And then Building C in the front of the property is 10,800 square feet. We've shown two driveways coming in from New Britain Avenue and 88 parking spaces on the site, including four handicap, four accessible spaces. Now, a little bit of, not guesswork, but trying to determine how many people and how many parking spaces we needed, not knowing exactly what tenants would be in there, but assuming that there would be a small office in each unit, and that would be 22 small offices requiring 22 parking spaces. The larger units, assuming three employees per unit, and the smaller units, two employees per unit, we came up with a total of 72 parking spaces. But the plan shows 88 spaces because we're trying to provide flexibility in case there might be a slightly larger company in one or two of the spaces. And that's part of what's driving the impervious area to be a little bit larger than what is normally allowed without a waiver. I added a number of notes to the plan that might answer some of your questions, so I'd like to read them very quickly, the special notes on the site plan. The proposed signage for this site will require a separate permit from the TPZ. All HVAC equipment will be inside, and there will be no rooftop units. There'll be no gates at the driveway entrances are proposed. Spill kit shall be provided for all units. All units shall be clearly labeled upon completion to facilitate emergency response. And fire suppression systems are not required in the buildings, and all dumpster pickup should be restricted to 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday. Okay, Shannon, I think I'd like to go to the Site Grading Utilities Plan, Plan 3. And now we get to talk about everyone's favorite topic, drainage. So the, because of the requirement that when you exceed the 50% coverage, we need to infiltrate and treat twice the DEEP's water quality volume, which is twice the volume is 2.6 inches of rain in 24 hours. And we also need to provide no increase in runoff from the site for the one-year storm through the 100-year storm, which at this location, the 100-year storm is 8.76 inches of rain in 24 hours. Interesting note that when I started as a young engineer, that figure was 6.9 inches in 24 hours, but based on the latest NOAA data, it's 8.76 inches. So we've designed, done a number of things. Sorry if I hold this?
Of course.
Okay. Just makes it a little easier for me to read.
Absolutely.
Thank you. So because the site is well-drained, although there is a high-seasonal water table five feet down, and based on the latest 2004 stormwater manual of the state of Connecticut, we have to keep the bottom of any stormwater system three feet above the high-seasonal water table. So that limits, to some degree, the depth that we can go with our stormwater system. So we're proposing a number of things. First of all, to take advantage of the well-drained soil, we're going to take some of the runoff from the impervious surface and infiltrate it into the ground. Area A, which is this area here shown in red, which is half of the building. Buildings will have peaked roofs. So half of the building, the runoff will flow to the southeast, and there'll be a section of parking lot in the rear here that will flow to a linear infiltration area behind Building A, and also in the front here. So this way, we're going to infiltrate up to the 100-year storm, completely contained in this area behind the building and in the front, to try to minimize the water that we have to send to our main infiltration system in the center of the site. We're doing the same thing with Area B here, which is the blue area. It's the part of the eastern entrance to the site will discharge to an infiltration area on the north side of Building C. And up to the 100-year storm, all the water for 8.76 inches in 24 hours will be contained and infiltrated into the ground. The large area in the center here, the main parking lot, all of Building C and half of Building A, and some of the parking to the west of Building D, which is white on the plan here, will discharge through, to catch basins, then to a hydrodynamic vortex separator to settle out the hydrocarbons and the gross particles, and then into a subsurface infiltration system, a rather large system of storm tech. These are the yellow plastic leaching chambers bedded in stone, and hold the water during the storm and have it infiltrate into the ground. And again, what we're doing here with the size of this unit is 100% of the water from the 1 to the 100-year storms will be contained in this system. There will be, as required by the manual, a high-level overflow out of the system, but based on the calculations, the system will be able to handle up to the 100-year storm. There is an area of Building D that will discharge to a detention basin located on the western portion of the site. There's the steep slope behind Building B, which will flow down, proposing underdrain all along the back of Building D to pick up the runoff from the slope, and that will discharge to the detention basin. And there is, of course, the water that falls directly on the detention basin. So that's going to be stored in the detention basin, and there'll be a overflow pipe to the point of analysis. Now, this point of analysis is where we looked at the pre-development flow, and the goal was to make sure that the pre-development flow, the post-development flow did not exceed the pre-development flow, and that's what the calculations have shown. Grading-wise, there, as I mentioned, there's about a 37, 38-foot elevation difference from the toe of the slope up to the top of the rail trails. The buildings will be 36 feet tall. So Building D, I'm sorry, Building B here, the top of the peak will be at elevation 252.5. The rail trail here goes from 251 to 255. So just to try to visualize, the peak of the building closest to the rails to trails will be about equal to the elevation of the trail. The site is also served by public water, public sewer, and gas. And I think that may cover this plan. Next, I'd like to look at the, Shannon, Plan 4, which is the Erosion Sediment Control Plan. All right, this is a plan. Okay. This is a plan that shows what's going to happen first on the site. And basically, I've come up with a sequence of construction. Just briefly go through it. The limits of clearing will be staked out in the field, a pre-construction meeting with town staff, then a 100-foot anti-tracking pad would be installed at the construction entrance. The site would be clear-cut, but no stumping or grimming initially. Silt fence and straw wattle would be installed along all the perimeter of the site. We install silt sack in the catch basins in New Britain Avenue, and then the town would make an inspection for the erosion control measures. Then the site would be stumped and grubbed. Any topsoil would be stockpiled at this location here at the rear of the site. And then, the grading would occur along the front of the site, where the berms would be established, and temporary sediment traps would be excavated as required by the 2004 Sediment and Erosion Control Manual. The detention basin would be built, and then the berms in the detention basin would be stabilized and seeded. The underdrain would be installed at the rear of the property. And then, the site would be in, ready to begin the construction of the buildings. Okay, let's. The landscape plan, Shannon? I have an associate, my long-term drafts person, who is also a landscape architect, Gwen Ashbaugh is her name. And so Gwen assisted me with preparation of this plan, because I certainly don't claim to have great knowledge of Latin or the names of the plants or the types of the plants, but I think we've come up with a pretty good plan. All the plans proposed on the landscape plan are native plants, and there's a variety of them, because as Gwen says, no one likes a monoculture. The landscape requirements for the, along the frontage of New Britain Avenue, one tree is required for every 25 feet, which is 20 trees. Rick is proposing, along the front of the site, in addition to the trees, to construct a landscape berm. I don't believe that's required by regulations, but it's felt that will be attractive. The berm will also have shrubs, and there's a number of boulders along the site. Now, those boulders will also be incorporated into the landscape berms along the front of the site. And the trees will be a mix of deciduous and evergreen trees, and then again, some shrubs. Along the side yards, two trees are required every 50 feet. So on the west side, there will be six trees, and on the east side, there would be 21 trees. Along the east side, we're proposing trees that have a narrower canopy, because there's not a lot of room between, actually, the two buildings, the bus garage and the proposed Building A. So these trees along that property So these trees along that property line will have um canopies of eight to ten to fifteen feet. Uh we don't want a tree that spreads too much o- over over the buildings. Um the rear of the property, uh as um as Bob mentioned, a a forty foot class C buffer yard is required whenever an industrial zone abuts a residential zone. That would require along the steep slope here. That would require eighty five trees and ninety three shrubs, based on your regulations. But as 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 has has been stated, you know, that it's not a typical residential zone. It it is the old railroad embankment, it's the heritage uh Farmington Canal Heritage Trail. So it's unlikely that a uh there there'd ever be residential development um in the in the rear of this property. So and in addition, it's ste- it's difficult to plant trees on steep slopes. Rick doesn't want trees to grow over his building. So what we're proposing instead, uh several things, but um a hundred and ninety linear feet of a six foot tall stockade fence uh along the 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 edge of the the rail trail property. Would be would be maintained by the town, it'd be built to town specs. The staff sent us a the standard town detail for this stockade fence, it's on it's on the the site layout plan. And that would that would serve a purpose of shielding the the development from people using the trail. And in addition, on the slope here. There would be a quite a bit of ground cover, we're proposing um uh well, bearberry, sweet fern, and northern bush honeysuckle. Plants that will not grow particularly tall, but will spread out to help stabilize the slope. Any trees that are cut from the slope uh will be flush cut and the stumps will remain. We are proposing trees in each corner of the property, proper trees where the land is 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 not steep and where where they will grow and where they will not hang over the buildings. So there there's 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 quite a bit of landscaping proposed, but we would request uh the waiver of the of the requirements for the the buffer yard in the rear of the site. The lighting plan? Okay, this sheet is the photometric lighting plan um to show light levels on on the site. And more importantly, to show that once uh you leave the site, the light levels fall to zero. The light fixtures will be dark sky fixtures, the maximum height of of the lights holes will be fourteen feet. Um the lighting hours will be, the standard hours will be dusk to seven P M. Um and the lights will switch to motion sensors um for after hours use. The staff has requested and the applicant has agreed that the light fixtures on the back of building C, which faces New Britain Avenue, will be decorative dark light fixtures. Plan seven. Rick is considering the possibility of phasing this project. So this plan here is the phase one concept plan, should he decide to start with one building instead of the entire site. Uh so it's to show how building um A would would stand alone uh on the property. A few notes that the staff had requested to be added to this plan, should he do the phase one. That the rear yard buffer plantings should be installed uh after the yard drain was put in. The low lying um plants on the slope, as well as the trees on the each end of the of the rear property line. That the side yard landscaping behind building A be installed as part of phase one. Eastern property line. Um that all disturbed areas on the site should be seeded if the next phase doesn't begin for um thirty days or more. And that the landscape berms along the front of the site should be seeded and planted as part of phase one. Those are all reasonable requests. Okay, well, um at this point, that that's a overview of the project. I I'd certainly be happy to go into um any detail or answer any questions.
How many for the presentation, or do you want us to go to questions? Okay, great. Thank you very much, plenty of detail on there for us to to sort through. Matt, you want to get started?
Yeah, sure, let's do it. Um, I don't know, wow, who would best be to ask this question? But uh you're currently accounting for eighty eight spaces. And you said you only needed seventy two. I I wanna, if you could explain the additional spaces required. I think you're at fifty seven or roughly fifty seven percent. And if you got rid of those, would that bring you within uh the standards?
I don't think it would quite bring us um down to fifty percent, if that's what you mean.
Sure.
Um I think it obviously would reduce the coverage. But the the thing is, um Rick wants to try to make these spaces, you know, preserve his options for whatever types of uh tenants are going to come in. I I didn't read the the list of tenants, but we did include on the plan. Uh the list of possible tenants were electricians, plumbers, H V A C contractors, trim finish carpenters, framers, carpet tile installers, wood flooring installers, surveyors, or landscapers. Again, the when we came up with seventy two spaces, that was making some guestimates about how many two employees or three employees per unit. Uh there could be more.
Sure.
So we'd like to have the flexibility, especially because the soil on the site is well drained and does allow us to to um infiltrate the stormwater that the 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 higher standard that's required for exceeding the fifty percent.
Okay, thank you on that one. Uh next question is uh regarding the garage doors. Every unit has its own garage door?
Yes.
Okay, in the plans, it looks like the parking spaces are, is that to account for a sidewalk? Because they're a little bit off the actual building.
No, no sidewalk, but there will be um pavement, it will be blacktop.
Okay.
So there could there will be garage doors um and it it correct me if I'm wrong, but the 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 tenants may park their cars, but they may have to move their cars to let the trucks out of the
Right.
the units. Sidewalks didn't seem practical when when each unit has a garage door.
Yeah, just making sure. Uh last question for you is related to the phased approach. In the, I don't remember the the drawing, but within the drawing, you have a detention basin. I just want to confirm that if you do move from there to phase two, you're gonna swap that out for the stormwater in infiltration system?
That's absolutely correct.
Okay.
The stormwater infiltration system is expensive. And with phase one, we've got the land to use, you'll notice on proposing uh detention base right where the stormwater system will be.
Sure.
So we can still accomplish the goals of um of storing and infiltrating twice the the water quality volume and up to the hundred year storm with an an open basin for phase one.
Okay. Uh that's it for me, thank you.
Thank you. Bob? Um, thank you, good uh nice presentation. Just kind of go along with uh Commissioner Vandals' question on the parking. So are we, because you have quite the array of um possible tenants. Are you looking or expecting showroom type uh space where they're gonna have contractors are gonna have customers coming in? Because if that's the case, then you are gonna need extra parking places. Or is it just gonna be employees and they're not expecting to meet anybody at the site?
No, it's not intended to be showrooms, it's not intended to be retail. Again, there'll be a small office, it's anticipated, there should be a small office for the owner. But it's not intended to have customers come during the day. So most of the traffic will be in the morning, when the employees and the owners arrive. And they get in their trucks and go out to the job sites, then come back in the afternoon.
Okay. Alright, um and then this question's more for Shannon. You had proposed a hundred and ninety foot, and correct me if I'm wrong, but you said it's town maintained fence? Are we okay with that?
Yes, the department, uh the director of public works and uh town engineers already reviewed and just and has, yes, consented.
Okay.
That was discussed as part of the inland wetlands commission review and approval for the project.
Okay, alright, um and then you have the motion sensors going from dusk to seven P M, and then motion sensors after that. I'm assuming that's basically just for emergency situations or somebody coming through at night with the lights?
Or a contractor arriving home late from the job site.
Right, okay. As far as snow removal, where are you anticipating putting snow on the site?
Shannon, this is plan two, okay, we've got it up. We've indicated some areas uh on the site. Here here here, here. And any excess snow would have to be removed from the site.
Okay, so we're avoiding the inland wetland review area?
You know, I I should have mentioned that, but maybe yes, yes, you're not gonna store the snow uh next to Hyde Brook. This is the uh site grading utilities plan three. Here is the inland wetlands, a hundred and fifty foot setback. I should have mentioned this during my presentation. We had to go to the weapons commission to get uh approval for the activities within this regulated area. That includes a parking area here and this driveway here and part of building C. But there are no s- no storage areas shown within that hundred and fifty foot upland review area.
Okay, and there uh there will be signage or there will be something in the contract saying no, no repairing equipment, no type of oils or anything like that will be changed outside and all that good stuff?
Yes.
Alright, I'll leave it for now, I'll leave other questions for other people.
Um so back to the snow, would prevent them from sh- someone who's plowing from uh from plowing the snow into the area where you don't want it burning up there? Well, that will be Rick Jones' responsibility to ensure that doesn't happen. Will you be standing out there or? Alright, um back to the fence that's going along, um how far is the fence actually from the bike path itself? It's right next to it. I mean, maybe a couple of feet. The rail trail is is pavement, and then there's some shoulders, and there's there's a uh, there's currently stockade fence on either side of the trail. We're proposing to put it right behind the stockade fence. Maybe replacing the stockade fence, we'll discuss that.
Well, there's split rail.
Split.
Split, split rail, so the typical split rail, you see, you can see the uh the indicator on the the plan. So you can see the Farmington Canal, Taylor Heritage Trail, and you can see the rail, the line with the box, the right, the square is the indicator for the existing fence line. And then the dark line with the highlight shows the proposed location. Where the split rail will be removed and the stockade will be inserted in its place. And then it'll return to split rail on either side. So similar to what we see in other areas of the trail where privacy fence is needed for a variety of reasons, and in many cases, it's um for a residential homeowner that wants privacy for their backyard. And then once you get beyond that, it returns to the split rail. So it's it's in the standard location where all the the railing is on the trail.
But as far as distance from the path, I'm thinking, yeah, I ride these paths a lot, um how close?
It's, so the path is ten feet, there's about a a three to five foot stone dust edge, and then the rail
Okay.
at at that, so from the center of, so center of the trail, it's about ten, ten to twelve feet from the center of the trail.
Alright, and it's usual for the town to maintain these?
The the town maintains, so uh Mr. Jones will maintain it during construction and then after that, yes, we will take it over.
And another question for you too is, why is it not right now a C one zone?
I have no idea. No, I mean, I'd have to go back and take a look, I I, the zone, I'd have to take a look at the zoning maps, I have no idea. And I, yeah, we'd have to, I'd have to start walking my way through the zoning maps and see if it was all C R at one point, or I do not know the history of this.
It just seems just didn't have it locked in, and just this one spot is not.
That I have no.
Welcome to zoning.
Alright, no more questions, thank you.
Um, thank you, thank you for your presentation, those uh thorough a lot of detail, I like the uh visual visual aids, I guess the delay worked in your your favorite bit, so you were able to cover a lot of things. The one thing I would like to um ask you a little bit further on was the phasing plan. Um I I didn't really understand what you had in mind with that. Is that just for construction purposes? Are you gonna put tenants in building A while you're building the other two buildings and you're gonna have this activity? Uh can you walk me through the thought process and the timelines you're considering?
Well, I'm not sure the decision has has firmly been made that Rick is gonna phase the the development, but but he'd like to keep it as an option. So yes, the building would be built, it it could be a standalone if if he, for some reason, sold sold the property. It would still have all the landscaping required and storm drainage. The idea was, uh you know, for financial reasons, maybe start with phase one and then finish the other two buildings. So yes, there would, there could be tenants in there while construction was occurring.
Understood, um uh thank you, I think my other questions have been asked already.
Alright, alright. Uh question for Shannon. Could you pull this up on the G I S? I'm just trying to understand where Hyde Brook runs through, how close it is.
Hyde Brook, once it crosses New Brighton Avenue, crosses through some of the properties to the north, if you will, or north or east on uh New Britain Ave. And then it discharges out to the Farmington River. So we are here. So this is eight, eight, five, five, six, I'm gonna leave it on this screen, I'll change it to the aerial in a minute. But there's a reason why it's being left like this, so this is eight, five, five, six. There's our highway garage and the M N J bus. You can see the blue line on the map, this is the G I S. So this is the uh pictorial of Hyde Brook coming through. It runs behind five thirty seven and five twenty five. Here you can see the label for Hyde Brook. And it meanders its way into our Farmington River. So it's very close from the property overall, when you, when I say close, overall, it is close. From a watershed standpoint to the Farmington River, I'm gonna put the aerial map on. This is what it looks like, and the aerial map is only gonna let me zoom in so far. So you can see, I'm actually gonna switch. Try this one. These are a little easier to follow. Go back to this. So there's a pond on the west side of the trail. Dave and I keep calling north and it's not helping because this is, it doesn't, there's not a clear north south. So
Yeah.
I'm considering north straight up. So this, I I refer to this as north and this is south in my agenda review and and Dave had the street is north. But anyhow, you can see the pond. It comes under the rail, rail straights under the railroad. Here's the brook. You can see it's a dark, a darker line adjacent to the highway garage. It is piped under the road and then there's open channel here. You can start to see it. It's close to the property line here behind the existing commercial buildings. And then you can see it gets picked up and is it meanders and makes a curve back and empties out into the Farmington River.
Okay. And where where is the retention pond in that?
The onsite.
Yeah, onsite.
So onsite, there are two small frontage and Mr. Whitby can correct me if I misspeak. So I'm going to go back to this plan. So there's pond A at the southeast corner.
Which is also behind.
Behind building A. Pond B, which runs parallel to the road. It's very linear swale. So you'll have the building, a small linear swale depression. It's a couple of feet. And then a berm. So in most instances, in both cases with A and B, these depressions, you likely will see very little of them, particularly this time of year, perhaps a little more visible in the winter because of the berms that are planted. The larger retention area is here prior to the outlet. Uh, this is at the north, see northeast corner of the site. I'll put back to the aerial and I will turn on the drainage layers if it'll cooperate. So stormwater features. You can see, here's the pipe that crosses. So that's the analysis point that Mr. Whitney made reference to. So we take a look at the pre and post stormwater. This this area that drains to this location. There's a predevelopment, what's draining there now, a volume and flow. And then the post development, volume and flow. So the drainage measures the the variety of depressions and ponds. Both underground and at grade will manage the stormwater. So the post development flow is less than the predevelopment flow. And given the soil conditions, the volume of water, I don't think we we took a look at the volume. Um, but a good portion of it will infiltrate into the ground. So it's likely the volume is very similar. Uh, or perhaps even a little less than the existing condition. Which is fine. In this case, it's not going to impact uh, the stream quality or the flow to the stream or the overall hydraulics. We, in this particular case, a slight reduction would be certainly acceptable. And it's it's required to meet or be less from a flow standpoint.
Thank you. I bring that up too, because I ride my bike on the trails often. And I notice around this time, a bunch of baby turtles. So I know it's silly to say, but I was just wanted to see if they meander their way into the retention pond.
So with the trail here, it's on there. You probably have more of that going on over here.
Yeah.
Quite honestly. So there's probably more of that going on here. And then these, these residences probably have turtles nesting and laying eggs in their gardens and whatnot. Similar, I have it at home. It's perhaps unlikely here, given the high disturbance at this location and this water is moving fairly steadily and it doesn't open up and create a wide impoundment. You may get some of it here, some turtle turtle habitat here in this area as well. Not saying it won't happen here. There's certainly be ambitious one that comes up and over. But it's probably more likely on the other side of the trail.
Okay, thank you. And my last question was, I noticed you said you may plant honeysuckle. What type of honeysuckle was that referred to?
Northern bush honeysuckle.
Haven't heard of that.
It's, um, do you want me to try to say the Latin name or? It's initially about two feet by two feet and then it spreads.
I just, I know there's a lot of invasion invasive species and I want to make sure it wasn't invasive was.
Uh, I hope not.
I hope not. But that's all for me for now.
Okay. Thanks, Peter.
Thank you for the presentation. That's very informative. First, I had just a few questions about sort of the anticipated uses by the tenants. Seem to be suggested, but I just want to confirm is there planned to allow overnight storage of vehicles, the bays, or is it just going to be stored for?
So yes, there there would be vehicles stored.
Okay. And then in terms.
There's a, there's a, there's a bay.
Right.
Or two bays in each of the, depending on the size of the units.
Okay. And in terms of workspaces at the units, what what type of work might be performed at the units? Is there going to be fabrication going on or is it mainly going to be storage and loading of trucks or what's sort of anticipated?
Well, we don't anticipate that there's going to be a manufacturing shop there. Um, it's entirely possible there might be some amount of work done. Um, I don't know, Rick, can you? Sure.
Um, yeah, so basically, we're, you know, an electrician.
Sorry, Rick, sorry. Will you identify yourself for the record?
Sorry. Thank you. Good evening, Rick Jones, property owner. I, what I have envisioned with this is you have an electrician that grew out of his house, a plumber that grew out of his house. Maybe as an employer too. He wants to get out of the house. He has the shop now. He stores some wire in there. Maybe he's got to fabricate a panel before he goes out to the job site. Fabricates it, goes to the job site, loads up the truck, has supplies in there. Same thing with a plumber. You know, he's got a plastic store, his snakes, his fittings, you know, a little bit step up to the next level for his business. Definitely don't anticipate, you know, a fabrication shop, no, you know, nobody's manufacturing anything, making anything there. Uh, like I said, it's it's more just going to be, maybe the owner gets there a little early in the morning. He goes into his office. He does some paperwork. The guys come. They get out of there for the day. Does it?
Okay.
Your question?
Yeah, yeah, that does. And that was sort of consistent with my understanding.
Okay.
Make sure. And then in regards to sort of waste disposal of facilities, it's just going to be sort of standard waste or are you going to be disposing of building supplies there or anything like that?
Uh, we're going to have two dumpsters. We're going to have, you know, regular, you know, garbage debris, whatever. And then a recycling bin. We don't anticipate, you know, a home remodeler coming and dumping sheet rock or it's not going to, I'm going to stay on top. My goal here is I want to attract good tenants, professional people, protect my investment. And hopefully hand it down to to my kids one day. That's that's the goal with everything. You know, we don't want messes. I don't want, you know, unprofessional people. It's, you know, I'm going to be on top of it. I'm doing the site work myself. I own a construction company myself. You know, I'm going to be very involved with it.
That's all the questions I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I've got a few. Mostly related to the agenda review. So hours for this? Are there limited business hours?
From Mr. Jones that was submitted with the record and and some of the things on the agenda review, we did address later on. I believe if I have the final version of the statement, we said six A M. To seven P M. Would be regular hours. There could occasionally be a grab and go situation. A plumber has an emergency or, you know, somebody's air conditioner breaks down, something like that. But those would be the normal operating hours, six A M. To seven P M.
And there was mention of dumpster hours too?
Yeah, the, uh, we said that the dumpster would be Monday through Saturday, eight A M. To six P M. I believe that's on the plan. So we can be
Okay.
Consistent with that.
And there was mention of spill kits?
Yes.
Okay.
That's on the plan as well.
All right. Um, I think my last question for now, are we? Are we good, Shannon, with the drainage report and where we are with that meeting?
Town staff received the drainage report this morning. Mr. C R reviewed it this afternoon. There's a few outstanding items. He reviewed it with Mr. Whitney at the end of the day. He's reviewed it with me. We would like to, we believe, and I believe it's Mr. Whitney's understanding as well, that the outstanding items can be addressed.
Okay.
It would require really the last engineering memo, which is May twenty ninth. Would be a condition for the commission to consider if if the commission so desires.
Okay. I think that's all the questions I have right now. Commissioner, is anything else? Come to mind?
I did it. You talked about deliveries to the site.
There will be deliveries. Yes, I don't think we talked about it. Do you have any detail on that?
Not large trucks, so.
I just forgot. I had one more. Um, the interior landscape in the parking area, you're also. Can you go over that again?
Yeah, we we didn't, we didn't go over it and I'll probably let. It really has to do with with snow removal, so it's related to that. But we are requesting a waiver of the the islands.
Yeah, we could just talk through. Yep.
Okay, this is the the landscape plan again. So parking lot landscape requirements, one tree for each ten spaces. Uh, so that's eighty eight spaces rounds up to nine trees and they're shown. So and and they, Tom has requested that there be some perennial perennial beds in the the center landscape island.
Okay. Thank you. I actually have have one more myself as well. I'm I'm struggling with trying to picture how it's going to look from the heritage trail, from the bike path, right? So if I look towards the site and I'm on the path, I'm going to see the six foot fence, right? Then there's the fifty foot setback and then a thirty six foot tall wall. Do I have that right for the for the building C that's backing towards it?
Well, it's not, not a thirty six foot tall wall, but the peak of the building is thirty six feet. Roof line here. So basically, the peak of the building will be equal to the elevation of the of the trail.
Got it. That's what I was looking for. Right. So it's not going to be, if the fence wasn't there, you'd be looking at the roof.
Right.
That's a good outcome. Okay, thank you. Well, this is a public hearing. So if there's anybody in the room that would like to speak for an opposition to the application, please come on up to the podium. Sure. I know you've been waiting for this for a while, so. I know. I know.
Hi, my name's Paul Jackie. Uh, this is my wife Barbara. Uh, we live on Juniper Drive, which is and I'm trying to picture in my head where my house is, this is where these buildings are and I you were so close to opening that up. I was, uh, anyway.
Yes.
Yeah, I I'm just trying to visualize and you had a good question of what it looks like from the path. Obviously, my concern uh, is the livability of, you know, my home and and making sure that the value of my home is least affected from having, you know, a a commercial industrial building to view it. Juniper, twenty Juniper, twenty, yes. So yeah, so if you look at the the circle of Juniper there. My house, one, it'd be righted at one over.
Yep, that's us.
So my, you know, our concern is basically, you know, how obviously, how is this going to affect us and the property from a day to day perspective? So we heard, we heard a few things that, uh, and we came in with a few things that concerned us. One is, you know, noise levels, light levels. Six A M. Was a little bit concerning. I I saw you, we have some questions on how you, how, uh, you know, what is the the belief of how that would affect the neighbors in the area?
And particularly at six A M., I imagine vehicles coming and they're loading vehicles at that hour. And if we have our bedroom window open, um, I do believe people hear that. So six, I just don't know what the rules are in hours of operation because six A M. Seems very early and the bus company itself is not allowed to make any outdoor noise until at least nine. And and again, in terms of zoning, I mean, you are close to a residential neighborhood. So I do believe if we look in the corner of our yard and you sit that building so far back, we will see that building from from the side. Yes.
Yeah, our and our other two neighbors will too. So obviously, you know, again, my concern is, and I'm not trying to stop progress here, but my concern is obviously the livability of of my home and and frankly, the the value of it. You know, if this thing does put off light or noise, uh, we're, you know, if we want to sell our house in three years and you know, people are coming in the morning and they see the noise and the and the the lights coming off it. I'm concerned that, you know, if I were buying a house, that would be, you know, that would devalue it, right? So I'm just trying to you know, what what things are being done for those of us in the residential neighborhoods that are affected to avoid.
And again, the one off situations where they're particularly early or particularly late. After all is said and done, those tend to become more frequent and they're not as infrequent as as somebody.
Are these units air conditioned? Okay, I mean, my concern there is for most of the year, then, if they're doing any kind of fabrication, the garage doors are going to be open. The no, it's not. You know, it's not indoors and contained.
Yeah.
There, you know, if there's no air conditioning, they're going to be doing that with the garage door open and it's going to be significant. So, uh, again, I guess that, I don't know if I have any further questions. My questions are, are we can, are we considering what that looks like? Have there been studies done on similar like properties at? What noise levels are there and what can be done uh, to avoid that from fact affecting the the neighborhood in in the area? I don't know if it means, you know, a a higher fence, um, you know, on the highways, they have those twenty foot fences to avoid the neighbors that are against the highway. Is is that something that that can be done? Um, and again, I'm making it up as I go because I don't, I don't know exactly what this is going to look like, but that is my concern.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to run a hold off on response until we hear other comments, please? Shannon, you want to check online?
Yes. If anyone's called in for the Rick Jones application for eight, five, five, six, New Britain Avenue, please raise your hand. Using the feature in Zoom, you'll be acknowledged to address the commission. Again, if anyone's called in to offer comment on the Rick Jones application at eight, five, five, six, New Britain Avenue, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom to address the. using the feature in Zoom to address the commission. Mister Chair, there's no hands raised.
Okay, thanks Shannon, if you wanna respond to their questions, that'd be great. What's that?
Sure, I mean, I can sum up in total and also respond to what Mister and Mrs. Jackie said, if that, if that works for the commission, yeah. Uh, we appreciate their, their comments. Uh, I'm not sure they were, I don't remember their names being on the list of people that we sent notices to. Everybody within two hundred feet under your regulation gets a notice, so I'm assuming they're further than that away and it. I'm not sure, this, is the bus terminal in between this property and, and their home Shannon? I'm, I'm just having trouble getting oriented.
Correct, this is the, this is the property, this is the M and J bus, the limited service location. So as the crow flies. Four hundred feet.
Four hundred feet, okay. And, and the building, uh, the, the use in their backyard going the other direction, is that also part of the bus?
Uh, this here, that's storage.
Oh, that's the self-storage, yeah. I should remember that because I, I think I did that. Yeah, uh, okay, whoa. And that's never happened before. Uh, so I, I guess their question about noise, there is a noise ordinance in town and if it's, if it's violated, there are um, things that can be done, enforcement action can, can be taken if there's a violation of the noise ordinance. Uh, the lighting, uh, we indicated, uh, that the, the photometric plan shows that there will be, you know, dark sky compliant lights, there'll be zero runoff at the property line, so with them being four hundred feet away, I don't think that's gonna have an impact. Uh, I, I would, I don't want to diminish their concerns, but on the other hand, I, I feel compelled to point out that they purchased property abutting in industrial zone, uh, they have industrial neighbors closer or commercial neighbors closer to, uh, uh, to their property than our use is going to be. I think, I don't think our use is any more intense, uh, than the highway garage, although they were concerned about the hours of operation. Uh, you know, those trucks start, the, the town highway trucks, I live right up the street and that the trucks start coming through my neighborhood at about twenty minutes to six. Uh, so I know the town gets started earlier than, than six A M and, and frankly, with the market that we're trying to attract, that's the time of day when, when these people want to get going, before the heat of the day. Um, you know, they, they need to get in, get their paperwork done and, uh, uh, get out to the job site, uh, at a reasonable hour, um, and they, and they tend to wrap up earlier in, in the day as well, I think, so. So I appreciate their concerns, I'm not sure what else, you know, we could, we could do to address it with them being, being four hundred feet away. We do have the fence along the rail trail. We do have some plantings along the boundary that's closest to them, uh, that they've pointed out. Earlier, the regulations require, uh, a landscape buffer along that, along that property line and, um, there're quite a few trees there. Yeah, and tho- those are the trees where we had to make them canopies a little narrower because we're so close to the bus company, the bus company building. Did, did you guys have anything else you wanted to say to address what, uh, those folks said? Rick, yeah?
What I just want to point out.
Now, Rick.
Right, come on up here.
Up to the, you know, just come up to the podium so we can, because it's being recorded, please.
So I just want to point out that, uh, so building A, I believe that's, that would be of, of their concern. That one, that building's not, uh, the one that would be in question of that, of the hundred feet from the property line. It would be.
That's right.
Building B. And it, it sounds like they'd be more concerned with the, with building A would be in their. Site.
Yeah, so I, I get, I think what Rick's pointing out is that the building that's closest to the, to the folks who just spoke, uh, that could be built without the zone change, I, I guess is what he's getting at. That one is not within a hundred-foot rear yard, uh, setback that's involved with the current zoning. Uh, the reason we're asking for the zone change has to re, relates to the, uh, proximity of the residentially-zoned rail trail and the fact that even though it's not used as a residence, it is residentially-zoned and that's where you need a hundred-foot setback in the C R zone. That's why we're asking for the change to C one. Commissioner Saint Germain, I think it was asked, uh, why isn't this property C one now? Good question. Uh, I tried to dig into it as well. The only thing I could come up with is that's the only property in this stretch that's not developed. So maybe it was all C R one time and maybe everybody changed it to C one, I, I, I just don't know. But we do know that all the way down in Britain Avenue, uh, on this side of, I'll call it the west side because I think that's what Shannon called it, uh, down towards the center, the majority of the properties are in the C one zone, so. Um, it's all, this is almost like the reverse of spot zoning. We're asking to get the property zoned consistent with its immediate neighbors. Uh, we think that it, it's gonna have a minimal, um, impact if we build fifty feet closer to Walnut Farms, then, then we'd be allowed to in, in the C R zone because the rail trail provides a buffer that's, that's greater than fifty feet. And we're gonna put a six-foot-high stockade fence on it, so it's, the peak of this building is not gonna be visible from, for people going down, uh, down the rail trail. And that'll mitigate any impacts. Uh, we think it's significant that no neighbors across from the rail trail who, who did get a legal notice, um, few of them were within two hundred feet, none of them have, uh, have raised any concerns that, uh, that we're aware of, so. Uh, we think that the waivers are appropriate, uh, the, the drainage that's being proposed, uh, you know, the key, key feature there is that the post-development runoff's gonna be less than it is right now. It's gonna be treated, uh, which it's not, it's not being treated right now. And we think the fencing and, and the, uh, vegetation is gonna, uh, mitigate any, any impacts there. We're just, uh, large trees aren't gonna thrive on that slope. That's a discussion that we had with, with the staff, uh, from the beginning. And, uh, so we think that the, the impact on the rail trail users is gonna be minimal as it will be on the residential neighbors, so. Unless you gentlemen have anything else or if there's any other questions, that'll conclude what we want to say.
Thank you. Mr. Shannon, is it possible to throw, uh, like, topography on this G I S?
Yeah, I was wondering about that too. Uh, it seems like a kind of unique topographical, you know, location that's, that, uh, the way it falls out, the fact that we're thirty-five, you know, look at those ridge lines.
So I'm going to. I'm gonna turn the aerial off just briefly and unfortunately, the contour labeling is not overly frequent, um. Yeah, and if I zoom in more, I lose it, unfortunately, but you can see.
Are they?
There, I, I believe these are one foot in here. Um, this seven, this is a ten, twenty. I can see the ten foot, you can see the labels on the, yeah, you guys aren't gonna be able to see it, the dark actually makes it easier. So you can see, there's a ten, a ten and a ten, so we're, we're close to being at the a ten-foot, there's twenty, here's thirty and you, and then come down and I think, um, Mister Wendy indicated it's roughly a, a thirty-five-ish foot embankment. So.
Could you scroll towards Juniper? I'm curious.
Of course.
So.
For the elevation difference from the, the side to Juniper.
So again, the trail, so the top of the trail at the north end of the property was, is roughly two fifty, I think I had in my agenda review. Two fifty near the north property line and two fifty-eight near the rear. Um, and it looks like we're continuing to climb, we might hit a level-ish point here. So it's just climbing up another couple of feet. This was, so somewhere in here is two fifty, this might be the two fifty-eight contour to sixty, sixty-two, sixty-four. But yeah, unfortunately, that says two thirty there. Just when I zoomed in real quick, I could guess, I could, I could read it.
Sorry.
No. So two thirty, so this was going down, so this, this, the house is sitting up a little bit. Two fifty here. And this. Might have been two forty, so this is, right, this is through, the lots get leveled out, the topographies just the aerial interpolation and then obviously the lots are leveled out around and so you've got the slope down into the adjacent property, so there's a hillside here as well. And that's. It's not me.
That kind of gets a good interpretation, uh, shows.
I can't get it clear enough to, to read it, unfortunately, to read, other than knowing it's a ten-foot drop. So from here to here is a ten-foot drop and then you'd have to come up another, somewhere in here, here's your other ten-foot line. There's a ten-foot drop and another ten-foot drop.
It's very helpful.
Okay, so unfortunately, I can't get to the actual numbers.
Maybe you could, you can see how.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, you definitely, and right, the contours are closer together, steeper slope and further apart is a, a more sloped slope. So clearly steep embankment.
It seems like that building, uh, the, the bus building would be at a, a similar height to what we're, what's proposed today. So it would be in front of it, which is shattered by that building.
Similar, uh, it's got a.
Like one story, that's not thirty-six feet.
Flat, it's got a, excuse me, sir, so it has a flat roof, so it's not gonna have the pitched roof. It does have overhead bay doors, um, that you can see on the aerial. So there are overhead doors, I believe there's a, you know, lift in there, so it's probably twenty twenty-six, twenty-eight feet, so the peak, the peak roof is gonna give you a different, um, look. So the building, when you take a, go back to the architectural elevations, it's twenty feet, so it's a twenty-foot wall and then a twelve on, I'm not sure what that is, twelve-on-six pitch. I can't read that, twelve-on-nine. Uh, pitch on the roof, so. And then at the, the front end, right, so it depends on which end you're. So at the back, at the back, this is what you're looking at, so twenty-foot, twenty-foot roof and then another sixteen-ish, twenty-foot to the eve, excuse me, and then another sixteen-ish feet to the peak.
Okay.
Thank you, so those, those bays, that would be on the other side of the building for Juniper, right?
So these, the garage doors face in, so these are man doors at the rear of the, at the rear of the building. So the man doors are here on this face for, I presume, emergency egress.
Yeah.
So the overhead doors face into the property. And, and that's in all cases, in all cases, the overhead doors for each of the building face into the property. So these have overhead doors, it's all the similar layout with, uh, overhead and then, um, the larger tenant spaces have a man door associated with it. So.
It's to keep some of the noise contained to be inside of proper, is what I was gonna, yeah.
I agree.
Hey.
That's good.
I'm, thank you.
You have to come up, sorry, Shannon, can we just go back to G I S for a second?
Of course.
Can you zoom out a hair? Can you tell me what those three properties are right there, the bus company, the storage, and then what's that other one?
Yeah, I'm gonna turn the, uh, contours off for now, you don't always pop them back on.
Yeah, the big black roof, what is that?
This, uh, this is polymer, hang on.
So you've got polymer, you've got the storage, and then you've got bus company, and then you have our proposed.
Correct, and then our highway garage.
And then the highway garage, okay.
Yeah, I believe this is polymer.
Yeah, that's what I thought, okay.
Polymer, storage, M and J. Uh, this is the, um, wood, the.
Yes.
Avon wood.
Or whatever.
Yeah, Avon wood and, um, the highway garage.
Yeah. And, alright, so. I get, so M and, M and J's no longer a bus company, but when they were running, what, did we have hours or operation for them? Because I'm sure they went in and started the buses early to get the kids to school by seven.
There are restrictions, so M and J, this was their satellite service location and there are restrictions. I'd have to pull that information, but there are hours of operation restrictions for that facility. The main storage location is still here.
Oh, okay.
So the buses are stored here. Um, there are some, I think the, the smaller, the mini buses are stored here, um, to a certain extent. It, but it's mainly for what I, for light maintenance, so oil change, brake checks, lights, that type of thing, if there was major.
Yeah, they, they tried to move that, all the buses to that, that location, but I taped it and it was seventy-five alarms, it's, it was crazy. Anyway, didn't happen. Um.
Okay.
Can I ask my question?
Hold on one second.
Sure, sure.
We're in the middle of a conversation. Alright, so, yeah, no, I think I'm good now, okay, so I gotta handle it, okay.
But yeah, I'd have to pull, I can, that can be pulled and provided, um, because there are limitations, I just don't know what they are.
Yeah, no, that's fine, okay. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, sorry to interrupt. Um, you just had a picture up of the back of the building, that's gonna be, I guess it's A, is that, uh, the one for, for this to, uh, closest to Juniper? And I, I was just wondering, so the, the, uh, the bays are gonna be in the building and I, I guess those are, uh, the emergency doors in the back for egress. Um, so what is gonna be behind that building? Is it, and like as far as lighting goes, is that contained downward lighting? And then it, just for aesthetic purposes, is there anything else back there to kind of, um, you know, to plant or fencing going behind that building? That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
So. Dave Wit. The requirements for the, the landscaping are twenty-one trees along, um, we call this the southern property line.
Whichever, we're, we're adjusting, it's all good.
To the right.
Right, there's also, uh, uh, existing vegetation in this corner here that we, we're not, not gonna remove, so consider about these trees, uh, let's see, these trees grow fairly tall, they grow about forty feet tall. Um, forty or fifty feet tall. What's that?
P T, P P, T S and T X are the symbols. So.
I'm sorry.
The P P, the P P, the, the symbol that says P P is Hoops Blue Spruce.
Hoops Blue Spruce, that.
E X.
Forty feet tall.
Amber Waves Arborvitae and T S is a green giant Arborvitae.
It's just thirty feet tall, yeah.
Correct, do you know the, the width of those offhand? I don't know that work.
Um, let's see.
Blue Spruce is more conical, but the Arborvitae are.
The canopy's fifteen feet wide, diameter, fifteen feet diameter by forty feet tall. And the Amber Wave and Arborvitae is about, canopy's about eight feet, and it's twenty-five feet tall. And then the giant green Arborvitae's are thirty feet tall with a canopy of about ten feet. We, we pick trees with narrow canopies because of the, there's not much space between the buildings here. Uh, as far as lighting, um, the, the light levels, uh, they'll just be downward emergency fixtures in the back, same. There'll be some downward, um, casting, uh, light fixtures along the, the, the rear of the building with, um, zero foot candles once you get past the property.
And there's nothing else, just to, to go back to the question, there's nothing else happening behind that building besides those doors, some plantings and there's some drainage being caught there, correct?
The drainage is a swell.
Yeah, right.
So.
Okay.
Be no structure. So, okay, you know, structures.
Okay. Shannon, is there any, if you can go back to the GIS, but is there any additional buffer on the neighboring property there, or is this the only buffer? A little bit.
So.
Looks like this is winter, but.
Yeah, correct, and. I can't, again, unless it's part of their approval, I'd have to, I'd have to go to their approval to see if that vegetation is required as part of their approval. To know whether or not that. Can stay, but you can see, so this, from a topography standpoint, I just, so you can see this. Change in the contour pattern, right, it it juts out into both shared properties, everybody, yes, we got it, okay. That same. Contour pattern is visible here. So when Mr. Whitney indicated, so that's that same contour pattern here between the two properties. And indicating that a portion of the vegetation. On Mr. Jones' side, and the triangle is staying, and then some additional pine trees being planted, so there's some pines here, these are. P N is probably a white pine, maybe.
No white pines.
Austrian pine, P N is Austrian pine on this, which has. A twenty foot width by fifty foot height is the mature size, they come in at sixty, so you have to keep in mind, everything comes in at sixty-eight feet, right, no different than our home. You're not putting in a twenty or thirty foot tree, you're not, you you can't move it, you can't get it stabilized, so, et cetera, so. So that's, that's that corner, and then if you flip back. To the aerial. I'll turn the contours off. And you can just get a general sense on that, the the density, but again, it's, it's winter time, so it's. It doesn't look, it looks to be mostly deciduous with limited evergreen canopy, when it's an evergreen canopy, it's pretty, I mean, you can see it here at the front of this, right? Those are evergreen trees here at the front. And it starts to become pretty obvious versus, and you can see the shadow that it's casting versus, there's not, there's wispy shadows of a deciduous forest area there.
Mark, from from me, I'm I'm thinking about building, I guess it's B, again, it it looks like from the plan that it's going to butt right up against the base of a steep hill. Is that correct on how it is designed, and there's no?
There'll be about a ten foot flat area between the back of the building and the toe of the slope.
And there's no need for any kind of a retaining wall or whatever with that?
No.
It's not going to erode?
No. And that's where the under, there'll be an underdrain installed with yard drains to pick up all the drainage coming off the steep slope. And that'll run parallel to the building and then discharge to the detention base.
Understood, thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners? Thank you. Discussion on anything, things we're not comfortable with, or in the application?
Well, yeah. Do you want to discuss if we close or close? If we close, then we can have that sort of conversation at all, if there's things that we want to. So, I think we need to change C R C one, that's perfect sense. Right? I think there's some serious concessions on the landscape, they added more, picked it up in the front to, in way for the the parking landscape. The only thing that's kind of stuck quite for me is impermeable coverage, but even that, it's a marginal increase, fifty versus fifty-six, it's a point seven percent. So that's, that's where I am.
Right there with me, yeah. Yeah. And I gotta go now.
Yeah, I echo those thoughts, I think it's in keeping with the sites around it.
Probably ready to close the hearing, sounds like we are. Alright, let's close the public hearing, can I get a motion in a second?
Like to make a motion to close the public hearing for Richard Jones' application for change of zone from C R to C one. Site plan to construct three contract buildings, work within the flood perimeter overlay zone. Waiver for impermeable coverage and waiver for interior landscaping located at lot eight five five six New Britain Avenue adjacent to. Five forty-four New Britain Avenue.
Second, everybody comfortable voting, know what we're voting for? All those in favor? Aye, opposed, abstentions, motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, you just voted to close the hearing.
Oh, yeah.
Right, you voted to close the hearing.
Yeah, sun lost, sorry. We've got to vote on all the individual items.
What do you, so you got to vote on the application?
Yeah.
So, in our.
Does it, do we have to do, because there are waiver items, should those be separate?
We're looking at four items.
That's completely up to you, so the zone change should be set, so the zone.
I'll just do it almost separately, that's fine.
I think it's clearer that way.
So zone change has to be separate, the special permit and site plan.
With the condition.
With conditions.
Okay.
And then the waivers, again, it's up to you.
Okay, I'm gonna do them all separately.
I think that makes sense.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the application by Richard Jones for zone from C R to C one. For lot eight five five six New Britain Avenue adjacent to five forty-four New Britain Avenue.
Second, right now, is everybody clear what we're voting on, I wasn't before, but.
So, and just to clarify, the zone change will have effective date sixteen days after the legal notice is published in the news.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions, motion passes.
I would like to make a motion to approve the application by Richard Jones for special permit and site plan to construct three contractor buildings. With work within the flood perimeter overlay zone. With the condition that they work to the satisfaction of town staff on the engineering memorandum. Or lot located at eight five five six New Britain Avenue adjacent to five forty-four New Britain Avenue.
Second, everybody comfortable voting on this, this requires five votes, correction?
Uh, the waivers, too.
Yeah, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Motion passes.
Like to make a motion to approve the application by Richard Jones for a waiver for impermeable coverage. For lot eight five five six New Britain Avenue adjacent to five forty-four New Britain Avenue.
Second, okay, and everybody comfortable voting, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion passes.
Alright, last one, I'd like to make a motion to approve the application by Richard Jones for a waiver for interior landscaping located at. Lot eight five five six New Britain Avenue adjacent to five forty-four New Britain Avenue.
Second, everybody comfortable voting, yes, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. Now, yes, sorry about our, I lost my head there for a minute. And we don't need to do anything without them, too.
Uh, so, on, not officially, we'll do, we'll chat about it under planners report.
Okay.
So, I know it's semantics, because. We're gonna put, so item two, the public hearing regarding the. Our twelve text amendment has been withdrawn, so there's no official. Presentation regarding that, I know public comment. However. Dylan's old trail mover, right, to planners report?
Yep.
So what I will say is, I I think we shared all the public comment with all of you. And I felt strongly I did not want the commission in a position of denying a text amendment. Put forth by staff, that just is silly. However. If the commission feels there's merit. To reviewing the housing density, be it in the R twelve zone or the R twenty, I had mentioned. This could be a stepping stone to R twenty and allowing two families in the R twenty. That's something that can be discussed and we can work on during planners report, the, there is. The owner of forty, Aaron Street is here, I don't know if he has any intent of, would like to address the commission or not, but. That's, that's where that stands, so the staff decided to withdraw. If there's any comment or question, I'm happy to entertain that on that matter.
I think from anybody for sure.
I was, I had actually emailed Shannon on the side, just frustrated with some of the verbiage of letters that were received. Just so people don't seem to misunderstand some of what's going on. And just kind of the tone is where concerned. So it's a little too bad we had to pause back, it'd be interesting, I was interested to hear more about it, see where we could take that.
I'm sorry, say that again.
I was interested in hearing more about this to see where we could take this, not that it was, you know, I still had made a decision on it in my mind, but it might have been nice to hear more.
Okay. Alright, well, the commission can think about it, because if it's something they want to revisit from a housing density standpoint, then we can certainly do so.
Sure, come on up.
My name is Brad Finocchio, I own forty Garden Street. First of all, thank you Shannon for all the time you spent to try to see if there's anything we could do. I bought the property two or three years ago, with every intention, I'm a Farmington resident, I think it's the best street in Farmington, if I'm being honest. And it's just kind of a wasted space in the backyard, the house was dilapidated beyond belief when I bought it. I redid the house, I have two great tenants in it, they're quiet, I'm there literally three, four times a week. I drive through it, I mow the lawn, I have someone mow the lawn, and I try to take pride in the property, and that's been my game, this isn't my thing, as you can tell. You know, the, and it's a big, flat backyard. So I decided, you know, once I finished the front house, I said, you know what, let's try for just something in the backyard. Shannon had said that it just doesn't meet the requirements of a simple, let's do it. And that's when I thought, you know, maybe I can try a little harder and see what I could do. The house that was intended to be put there is is pretty, it was already built in Farmington. So, you know, I think there's a lot, like, I read these emails, I read the letter, and I'm sitting going. The facts aren't the facts, like, I'm not here to sell it, I'm not here to to do anything, and I understand this is a regulation for the town, not just for Garden Street. And, you know, Garden Street, it's it's preserved, and why would I want to do anything to wreck the character of my house? So all I ask is if there's anything down the road, if there's any suggestions, if there's anything I can do. To show you that I'm genuine, like, I'm not trying, trying to pull one over on anyone, it's not my style, I I think Shannon can attest that I've been pretty straight up the whole time. And, you know, I want to work with neighbors, I went to him, I talked to his wife and talked to him, I'm not out to cause a neighborhood war or a battle with anyone, if there's trees or plants, or. If we're going to sit and work the plans together, I'm all ears, like, I'm not trying to to make a big deal out of it, so I've been to all the meetings. I I've done everything I thought that would make it smooth for everybody, I didn't know there was such resistance. It's kind of sad to me, like, here's this yard that people could be enjoying. You know, this, this property, and, you know, let's work together and see if there's some way we can work together for everybody in the town, not just my property, that makes it work. And lastly, I mean, you know, there was talk in the emails about traffic, it's two units, like, it's not like we're talking fifty cars or, and I wouldn't want that in my yard. So that's all I ask, and again, thank you Shannon, thank you commission for all your time, and if there's anything we can do to, in the future, I'm all ears. And same for you, I I want to try to work together as neighbors, and that's my goal here, and if it doesn't work, it doesn't work, I understand and I respect it. But that's all I'm asking, thank you.
Appreciate it. What, did you want to come up?
Well, my name is Jim Longworth, and I live at thirty-six Gardens, and I'm sure that you've read my emails and read my letter, and I'm glad that Brad is here. I was not prepared to speak tonight, I thought the issue was was dead. Just to be clear, okay, uh, the, uh, my biggest concern was the way that this was being handled. I did not like the fact that this was being handled as a text amendment, period, this was a slippery slope. The fact this was being handled as a text amendment. Didn't require notification of anyone. Okay, unlike any other change. If I hadn't found out by accident, I would never have known until Mr. Finocchio started building his, his two family. In the back of, literally in my backyard, that's not right. And it affected twenty-two other properties in town. By Shannon's own numbers, it would have increased the R twelve zone by twenty-five percent, is that really what the town of Farmington wants? Without having given it any other thought, the only people who would have been aware of this would have been Shannon and the zoning commission. That doesn't seem right to me. Okay, and literally, I stand in my backyard, and I have a beautiful view. Now granted, the garage needs some work on Mr. Finocchio's property, but the change would have been two houses that are literally a hundred years old. Now I would look at a two-family house with vinyl siding in my backyard on Garden Street. That doesn't seem appropriate to me, you would be opening the door for multiple lots along Garden Street. To have two family units to be added in the back on those lots, that's not what you want for the for village. And I defy anyone on the commission to stand in my backyard. Have a plot laid out and with an elevation stick and tell me that, yeah, that looks good, or any of the other lots that are affected. So I hope that my letter was effective in changing your minds, and now it sounds like there's another approach, and perhaps considering changing the lot to maybe an R twenty. Am I misreading what, did I, did I walk in?
No, you didn't hear it correctly.
Okay, I'm sorry, but, you know, if Mr. Finocchio has other plans, I don't know that it's the town's job. To accommodate someone who wants to change. If they have plans for their property as drastic as that, I don't know that it's the town's job to accommodate that. If perhaps they wanted a granny pod or something else, that's one thing, but to add a two-family on an existing property, that doesn't seem appropriate. I tried to illustrate on on the letter that I provided, that Mr. Finocchio's attorney skillfully provided photographs of of supposedly like. Properties in the village last week, where he showed shared driveways, where he couldn't see the other. Single-family homes in the background, okay, that were single-family homes, owner-occupied properties that had been there long before the zoning. Regulations that exist today or in place, okay, but he didn't show. But he didn't show you a front view of forty Garden Street with a big vinyl box in the background. And again, I don't think it's appropriate. I don't think that's what you want for the village, and I don't think it's fair to the other two, twenty-two property owners around town that were not notified that this text amendment would impact their properties. So, with that, I'll leave it. And, you know, again, I appreciate the work that Mr. Finocchio has done to the existing property. I just don't like the, the way that this was presented. I don't like the fact that he and his attorney went to the town, they bent over backwards to try to make this work for him, and I was never informed. And I don't, I don't like it. This is the second time that the town has done this to my wife and I. The first time was, was with polymer, and we had to hire attorneys, and we ultimately moved out of Farmington for twenty years. We lived in Avon. When I moved back to Farmington that we bought in the village, I never dreamed that I would have to deal with another zoning issue in Farmington. And yet here I am. So, with that, I'll leave you with that thought.
Thank you.
Okay.
Commissioners, what's up on the screen? Has to do with the discussion that we started at the end of the last meeting regarding the text regulation for Article Two, Section One A of the zoning regulation with respect to commercial vehicles on residential properties. As noted in the agenda review, I did additional research on the current zoning regulation. The language, that research didn't provide any real illuminating information for me as to where that language came from. As I noted in the agenda review, in eighty-seven, language was introduced that stated very basically that parking for more than one commercial motor vehicle, not having more than four wheels, should be restricted, and that regulations on trailers, mobile homes, et cetera, we go to Article Four, Section Nine, which we continue to do today. And was able to figure out that that was the prior, or a couple of prior planners. Bruce Hoben, I'm not sure if he was a planner or planning consultant. Jeff Olandorf started in summer of eighty-seven, and shortly within the year then was working on a comprehensive rewrite of the zoning regulation. And that shows up, I included, and it was posted to the website, the TPZ minutes from June of eighty-eight. And you can see there were multiple pages, and it discussed the changes, and some of them were definitions, and enumerated all the changes. And here under Article Two, Section One, Use Regulations for our ADR forty zone, it discusses accessory uses in buildings. This regulation concerning parking and storage of vehicles requires further clarification, including the definition of commercial motor vehicles. So, and as I was going through, they're literally, and some of you would love this, these are literally hand notes, and the, and the file folder is probably three or four inches thick. I was gonna bring it down, but I was afraid I'd literally jumped on it. So, it was in the credenza we've, we've kept, and these are just hand notes because he would write out, he, he was not, I, I think he became more computer savvy as time went on. He literally hand wrote out everything and gave it to his admin, Betsy, to, or Betty, excuse me, to, to type everything in. So I've got the hand notes, but interestingly too, because again, it was eighty-eight, not ninety-eight, so eighty-eight, pre-internet and pre-website, and we were doing due diligence the hard way and going to all the municipalities. He must have done correspondence to the adjoining municipalities. And I have hand notes because he had reached out to multiple Simsbury, Bristol, Bloomfield, Weathersfield, Avon, Windsor, and there's notes talking about parking in the front yard. So, in a residential zone and restricting parking in the front yard and how these other communities had done it, and there's responses back. Still, in all of that, nothing regarding the current language that discusses a one-and-one-half-ton capacity. Obviously, the four wheels is a carryover from the eighty-seven version of the regulation, but the one-and-one-half-ton capacity and the restricting commercial and combination plates, there's no notes, no references, nothing specific. So, we checked that box, that's done. We still need to, I think, land on a better definition of commercial vehicle. I have had a few conversations with others in, in town regarding this. One of the individuals that had been around at the time, I think, came into TPZ just after this was adopted, is Skip Pogson. So, he's willing, and I haven't chatted with Mr. Pogson yet, and so maybe that's what I will do first. And I think perhaps if there's clarity to add on the subject matter, I may ask him to come in to speak to the commission unless there's an objection to that. I fear additional information can't hurt at this point. The other thing I was going to do was reach out to some folks at DOT and also reach out to our police chief to see if there is anything from a legal standpoint from a commercial vehicle, and try to see if we can start to get something that's tangible, not overly restrictive, but tangible, so that we've got something measurable from a staff level to work with, but also keeps the larger commercial vehicles, as I've mentioned at the last meeting, we certainly don't want a semi-tractor trailer being parked on a residential property on a regular basis, unless it happens to be moving day. But they one-off, you know, somebody that's bringing home a company vehicle that has a logo on it, I don't want to be so restrictive that now we're technically have a zoning violation because somebody's company vehicle is in the driveway, and it doesn't beep or make any other unusual noises or other than it's just parked there and has a logo on it, so.
I did some internet research after our last meeting to talk about it, and it, what I took away from that was that everybody seems to be looking at gross vehicle weight as, as the defining factor, and that light duty is class one, two, and three, so up to, you know, fourteen thousand pounds. Could we make something simple and just say, you know, you're allowed one up to class three, and others, you don't have any, any collections? Or, or, or we? It, it, maybe there's a way to make it, make it simpler by just concentrating on gross vehicle weight.
We can, yeah. We, that's, that is one element, but is one sufficient? So if somebody has two pickup trucks that has a larger vehicle weight, or two, say one has the, a dually, say pull a camper, and then there's another pickup truck, because...
Yeah, maybe you can, you, you can have one of those, like an F-two-fifty, F-three-fifty, or whatever it is, which is about the higher of the light-duty trucks, and then you can have one other one, that's, you know, a class one or a class two, which is an F-one-fifty, or the Silverado, or, or, or something, something like that, or a minivan with your plumbing truck, or your electrician's truck. You know, we can sort of restrict it that way. It seems, it seemed controllable. I just did some searches, like what other people were doing. They said there was a lot there related to vehicle class and, and weight, and something around that looked like it was probably the best way to go, but I, I, I'm fully on board with, you know, exploring it further, maybe having Skip come talk to us and, and do, do more stuff, so.
And Garrett had found something with the class, it's just we're trying to make sure that it's in, it's either a DOT standard or an FHWA standard. I want to try to get away, if possible, from an automotive industry. And I don't know if we will be able to, because I'd like to get, I'd, I'd like to avoid having to use the nomenclature of an, of an, like an F-three-fifty or that, that were the three series. So if it's a class, a DOT class,
Right.
then, or FHWA classification, I'd rather use that nomenclature. And I, I, Garrett had found something that has classifications, that sounds perhaps similar to what you found.
Yeah, GBR.
But I wasn't necessarily clear if it tied to a federal or state standard nomenclature. So if we can get that, then I think, I think absolutely that's something that we can start to, to work with and use those classifications. So, so that's, at least, as far as an explanation as to why, because I, I'd like to go back to before we come forward. That's as much as I got. So I, I went through, I, I, it was very illuminating to go through Jeff's hand notes, and kind of interesting with respect to specifics as to the origin of this wording, it's, it's not there, and I don't know that it ma, and there's not a lot of di, when you look at the meeting minutes, I went through all of eighty-eight, we're able to do word, so I didn't have to read them. I, I did not read them word for word, the entirety of eighty-eight. But you can do, I could do the word searches on the regulation, on the PDF files, and it was clear that it was talked about just in June, and then the final version in December. And that's, that's what we've got. So I think we're, we're fine moving forward. I think even, you know, the conversation at the last meeting, it was clear that there was interest in trying to, you know, revamp this forty years later, so. So we will continue to persevere on this.
Also, we would consider things like visibility, like if it's in, if it's garage and you can't see it, or if you can, or length of driveway, or length of, or just visibility of driveway, like if someone's got a half-mile driveway and you've got two vehicles, it's very different than if your driveway is like thirty feet. To these vehicles.
Yeah, size, size of lot, right now it's a one, it's, it's a one standard for all the residential zones regarding, regardless of the size of lot. So that's, I want to be careful that we don't start to add too, too many layers to this, so. But absolutely, we can start to get, get a little more information and, and then revisit and go from there. So, okay? But that's where we are with that right now.
Pretty good for a week and a half, Shannon.
Not bad.
It's only been a week and a half.
It's only been a week and a half. All right, but that's what we've got for that. I don't have any other planners report items. If anyone has any questions for me? Going once, going twice?
I was saying, go on. I was the one with the metaphor. All right, nothing for Shannon? All right? Approve the minutes from the May twenty-eighth meeting?
Like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the May twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five Town Plan and Zoning Commission meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. I'm gonna abstain, because I wasn't here.
Okay.
Abstentions. Motion passes, meeting adjourned.